Okay.
It is 9:01, we'll call our meeting to order. Roll call please.
Bobbit.
Here.
Rock.
Here.
Hess.
Here.
We do have a quorum. Max, would you lead us in prayer today?
Yes, if you bow your head. Dear Lord in heaven and Father, we thank you, dear Lord, for this day, and we thank you for the rain to replenish the earth. We thank you for the seed time and the harvest that we've experienced. We especially want to thank you for your Son who came to earth and lived on earth and did not commit sin. We ask that you help us to do our best to follow that example. We ask you, dear Lord, to watch over our employees, help them return safely home to their families. We ask you, dear Lord, that you help us in our decision-making today, that it be the best and for the best in the county interest. We ask you, dear Lord, to watch over, sky guard and direct us and protect us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Yes. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I acknowledge that the agenda was properly posted in accordance with the Open Meeting Act.
Consider an act on the approval of the minutes from August 6, 2018, regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I will second that. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Rock.
Abstain.
Hess.
Aye.
Motion carried. Two, four and one abstention. Motion still carried. Um, comments from the public on the below agenda item? None.
None.
Um, item A, transfer of appropriations. Do we have any transfers?
No.
None.
Very good.
Um, review, oh, let's see. Purchase, uh, purchase card payment approval form, July 2018, total $96. This is for Desi Scott, $96 for... Uh, lodging. Desi put lodging for Joseph Hall on her credit card? On her P card? Can that happen?
Well, it just can't... Oh, 'cause she paid for it.
She paid for it and she didn't...
She shouldn't be doing that.
No, can't do that.
No.
We can't do that.
I di- I didn't realize that was what... I thought she was just reserving it and then...
Yeah, now, reserving she could, but as far as actual payment, it would've had to have been...
He should've paid it and then...
We should've submitted the PO and done the correct bill.
That's what I thought was...
So, um...
Can, can we do, I mean, we have to pay the bill because it's already gone through. But, I mean, I can, you want me to put it on the next agenda that will, uh, I can send a letter or send an email and then we can acknowledge that that's been addressed? That that cannot happen in the future or...
See, that's a problem. That, that's a big problem. The, I think, went to the schools and that's why we learned if it's your card and you're using it, it's you.
Only for your use.
Only for your use. She can use it for hers all day long.
But not to reserve somebody else's.
Right.
Yeah.
I thought that's why we got the card to begin with, so she could reserve rooms down at Echo on that instead of on her personal credit card.
Yeah, she...
Which is, I thought, was the same thing we were doing and we were gonna get an invoice then from the hotel.
And pay out of the...
And pay just really like a purchase order.
And pay a direct deal like we normally, which that is...
We can't help, we can't help the way that...
Yeah.
Now, I think that that was the way it was...
Yeah, I think so.
That was the intention of the whole deal.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, so, um...
I think we just change it so the account, so it bills to Pat's account and pay her back out of Pat's account.
Yeah, that shouldn't come out of... You got a P card?
Yeah, I need to activate it. I've got it locked up in my file cabinet in the office.
Oh, yeah, you, what you were saying, Cindy, you was gonna have him pay the P card for him instead of doing a transaction between us.
Where's our P card? Well, I guess I can't even find our P card contract. Didn't it there?
You want me to go get the P card folder?
That's all right. I guess it's, uh, be noted that, that, that... That wasn't handled. Yeah, well, let's, let's get some advice from Stephen Young on that. I, I know we owe it. I know we owe...
Windows have to be paid, but we don't wanna be like...
As I say, if we don't pay them, they start charging us interest.
Right, 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 so...
We won't have our meeting next week.
No.
Okay. So, how should I... I got the PO for District 3.
But see, the, you, you can, you can guarantee it with yours, but he should've paid for it when he got there. I, I don't know how we did it because...
Or do the bread bill.
See, you can't, you weren't there to use it. You weren't there to use the card.
Right.
The class says someone else cannot use your card and basically, he's used your card.
Okay.
So, so...
And we send an authorization, or I send an authorization 'cause I asked him when he got there what we'd have to do, so...
Well...
And I'm, and I'm sorry, this is the first time I've used it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, uh... So, we need to go back and read our contract of what we're signing, what we're doing with our cards to make sure we're not doing them for some... That, that's it. You're responsible for that card.
Yeah.
So, it's just a...
Okay.
Yeah.
So, that's, yeah.
All right, well...
Oh, well, go back and do that, so, sorry about that.
It needs to be paid, so as long as we'll understand that that wasn't handled quite properly, then we'll go from there.
I had a dollar two too much.
Okay.
Not bad.
With that being said, I'll make the motion to go ahead and pay the $96.
Second.
Hess moves. Rock seconds to approve the purchase order, purchase card payment for $96 for District 3, Jeremy Hall to pick up a bed. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Rock.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All those motion carried unanimously.
I make a motion, we review purchase order and travel claims.
Second.
Hess moves. Rock seconded to review payment of purchase orders and travel forms. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Rock.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All those motion carried unanimously.
Okay, um...
Cindy, this is a Mountain Dew 19. But we're not paying for 10.
It's just there, yeah, that doesn't add up.
I see the highlights, just the 10 up there, but if it says a Mountain Dew 19, do we owe the 19 or do we just really affect owe the 10?
In our commissioner's budget for here at the courthouse, we, we budgeted for a phone bill, right?
Uh, n- not, but, that's out of our cash account. The phone goes out of our cash account. Comes out of our M and O, 4,000 or whatever it is.
For the district.
Where is it? It would be under...
For Desi's?
Yeah, Desi's phone, yeah, it's out of cash account. It's, uh, what, where's hers? Hers is, uh, 4,000.
It should be 4,000.
Yeah, 4,000.
205.
Yeah, mhm.
Okay. Well, the only question then and I have is all three districts are paying the same and your district is on the same phone bill as...
I think you'll find another PO for that on the phone, you're, 'cause we paid, we goofed up last week. We proved some of them, but we didn't have them all in here.
Oh, that's right.
Desi's wasn't here. Mine was. Desi's wasn't in here.
So, you paid for yours last week?
Uh-huh. Well, we didn't, we're holding it to send it all together, but there was some that weren't encumbered, so they're all going up to Stephen.
Yeah, once we produce the check, then we're taking it up there and then he's gonna do a letter and send it certified mail.
Right.
Just so we have...
Yeah. Yeah, we're not directly mailing it out. It's going up to him first.
And certified for terms.
Yeah, yeah, he said he'd send it out certified. Hi, I think I maybe just figured it out, but, um, we got a bill from, uh, on the car wash and it's got a June and a July. It says $19 is owing, but apparently... Okay, so there should be another one that has the $9 on there? Okay, gotcha. Okay, thank you. Bye-bye. Okay, she said there should be another one. Says one of them was for last fiscal year.
Oh, okay, I got you.
And then one is for this fiscal year.
I got you, thank you.
Mhm, once she said that, it's like, oh, okay. That makes sense.
Yeah.
Cindy, yours. That's, yep, thank you.
Better do where you're stacking.
Get the stacks, make that, we'll re... Okay, thank you. And I'll put the rest of them in there if you remind me.
That's what remind me, remind you.
Yeah, it is.
Now, Cindy, on these phone bills, why would the commissioners be three times as high as everybody else? Everybody else was just paying the 126977. That should've been, we should have a 1/3 of that. Doesn't seem high.
Oh, yeah, that should just be a third of that.
A third of it, yeah. 'Cause that's what everybody's paying. It shouldn't be three times as high for our office. Everybody should be equally.
On that making up on the phone bill?
Well, but she, so this is, is this for courthouse or is this for your shop?
That's our courthouse.
That's courthouse, because that's what I was saying.
I think it was the shop. So, did they note, I thought that, I mean, we didn't, I didn't talk to Alex about this, but, um, was everyone not going on AT&amp;T? Weren't they gonna be able to mirror it?
We can't have AT&amp;T and Waukeeta and Poncree.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, and I paid my, and I paid 126975 or whatever it is last week for just my district shop.
Oh, so this shouldn't be...
So, we should have a third of that.
Yeah. Let me buzz through in here.
Here's one.
Did I miss some?
Yeah. Let's see, are these all the rest of these?
Yeah, those are done.
Okay. I'm sure Mike put in folder here.
Yeah, yeah.
Off of that back.
Yeah, that doesn't, that should've been a third of...
I got just a few more left.
Huh, is Alex around? Can she come in? I, okay, thanks, bye.
Hey.
Goodness.
Excuse me, thank you.
Okay, this is the end of it.
Okay. We'll put them in here and we'll have them have a short bit.
Hi. Question on AT&amp;T, okay, 'cause they're saying this should've been a third of that because it'd be for courthouse, for Desi's, rather than them each paying...
What do you mean? Well, everybody's paying 12, every office is paying 12.
6977.
So, that's what I paid at my, my, my district shop and that's what every office is paying. So, just because we each pay a portion of it doesn't mean we should each pay the full amount. We should pay a third for that.
Isn't that what, doesn't County General pay a portion? Or, no, I guess that's Dina. So, what is, what are you saying yours should be?
Well, it should be a third. I mean, we have to have three POs now instead of...
One.
Instead of one. Actually, we only need one because that comes out of, that comes out of her 4,000. We only need one out of 4,000 for the 126977.
And then you take thirds out of that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. 'Cause we, we all put money equally into that.
But does, without this, does it not make sufficient money to ma... But we had 10 offices, right? Or 10, was it divided by 10?
There's 10 there. Well, there is 10. They got, yeah, there's 10. There's the three districts and the seven.
So, the election board, the Sussar, sheriff, four per... Let's see, there's one, one, two, three, four, five, six on this floor. And then the short sheriff, seven. Dina is eight.
And then nine, 10, 11.
But there shouldn't...
There's not, not three districts pay for it?
No, they don't have, they don't have AT&amp;T. They, I have a, I have one. I would have AT&amp;T, I would have AT&amp;T at my district shop and then we have AT&amp;T here for the commissioner.
Commissioner's office.
But they don't ha, and we run...
We have pine air.
Yeah, you have pine air.
What we're saying is, is that, that 15 or 16...
$1,200.
$1,200 needs to be divided in a third.
Well, actually, it needs to come out of 400 'cause that's her account.
Yeah, out of that, out of that account.
We can make it all out of one, that one account and we all three are gonna pay for it.
Yeah.
But...
Well, I can't fix it now. It's in last fiscal year. We'd have to pay it like that and then do a transfer.
Thinking transfer, how, how you gonna?
Well, we, but we'd still way overpay our phone bill.
Well, not if we pay it back to you in this fiscal year as a correction.
Why wouldn't you just cancel it and then in two years we roll that?
I can't cancel a PO from last fiscal year.
No, 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 don't cancel.
Adjust them.
Adjust them, yeah, adjust them. And then in two years, that money comes back to those accounts. I mean, I know, I realize it takes two years or whatever. One year, excuse me, one year before it comes back.
Okay, my question is, is without these three, is there not sufficient funds to pay it? Should the rest of them been more?
Well, that's what, we're gonna have to make up the difference then. Is that correct?
Yeah, I would think.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, 'cause then the rest of them didn't pay enough.
She's already divided it by that, that number.
I'll just have to do a spreadsheet on it or something and figure out where we're at because, I don't know, I mean...
So, we don't have the money then on the last fiscal year? The rest of the offices don't have the money for that?
Well, we encumbered 1,700.
Right.
But if we do, we're need to fix it today.
Each one was encumbered 1,700.
Well, but not mine. Do you remember our conversation? Because my, I was already being charged triple what I... I was already being charged 300 and 130 was all I had budgeted in last year's money for the phone bill.
Wouldn't it kind of, everybody though, was, did that?
Nobody else was paying 300. I don't know why mine was so high. Dina's was 130 and theirs was like 130, but mine was 300.
I know at one time it had to do with the number of lines you had coming into your office.
We had like two lines and a half.
Okay, so you had three lines. Okay, that, then we went into that deal that it was, it didn't matter if you had 100 phones, it was still the same, right? You know, so, uh, you know.
I don't remember.
So, so, did ever, is this what everybody paying? 12 whatever?
Mhm.
So, you didn't pay more because this was for a full year, right?
Well, 10 months.
I had 1200 to pay, but I did not have 1,700 to pay because I had already paid extra throughout the year when we actually were paying the phone bill. Remember, I had three POs. Pat Rock, if you remember, I think you...
Yeah, July, August and, July and August. You had two months, July and August. 'Cause these are September through...
There were at least three months that I had put on the PO, like a sticky note that said, I, you know, can we address this? 'Cause I don't have the budget for this $300 phone bill. Do you remember it, Max?
I remember that.
Yeah, I do.
I don't know what we're gonna do. AT&amp;T's been a problem.
Oh, big problem.
I know.
If, if we go ahead and pay this and run it through like it's billed and then you make a note that...
I'll, I'll work it all out.
We have to adjust that next year.
Yeah, I'll make up a spreadsheet.
Problem, the problem is you can't transfer money back into cash counts.
Uh, that's true.
You can't transfer money back into cash counts. It's not allowed, so...
Oh, boy. I guess this is a Stephen question then.
Yeah.
It should be an auditor's question too.
Yes. And if we go ahead and pay them, it's gonna be a done deal.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Well, as it stands now though, it's like we're paying everybody else's bills, so I don't know how you correct that.
Well, can we, no, I guess, 'cause it's already been encumbered back in last fiscal year, so we can't change that without just canceling them?
Do we wanna call the auditor and ask that question?
I don't think the auditor can help us on this. The auditors can't even fi- figure salaries, so, um, I'd rather ask Stephen.
Okay.
Do you want me to see if he's available?
I, I think he's gonna have to study it, Cindy. I don't think he can come down and look at it and give you an answer, cut and dried, so... I think you're just gonna have to send it all up to him. Send the whole folder up to him with everything, what the amount is and say, here's where our problem is. It's divided wrong, now what do we do?
Have we paid it?
No.
No, that was what those were.
Yeah, we paid a bunch, we didn't, we thought we had them all last week when we did them, but we missed ours and somebody else's. Can't remember who. There oughta be another one in here floating somewhere.
I, I've just seen the district so far.
Okay. I can't remember, maybe it was this one, so find out.
So, those others were holding or did...
Yeah, no, they're holding 'cause they have to all be together.
Yes.
Just hold them and I'll put them all and we'll do it in two weeks.
Okay, so my next question is, can we, can we add to a blanket? To pay it?
If it's not last year's, you can. If it's last year's, you can't. If it's this year's, you can because it's, it just doesn't, it just doesn't get signed off on the blanket.
Okay.
If it goes over, you add to it and it goes over.
'Cause I had a blanket last week that went over like 600 bucks on, on Rock.
Are you talking about the ACG?
Yeah.
It was not done as a blanket?
It was?
No, it was not done as a blanket.
It's supposed to've been done as a blanket.
No.
Well, I know what you do then.
Yeah.
'Cause I'd been down that road.
The Stephen deal.
Yeah.
It was done on July 25th, but it was not done as a blanket.
That, that's unfortunately the only way you can resolve that.
Mhm, I know, and it's a pain to do that, but I don't know what it, that's what Stephen says we have to do.
I think we were cut off on July 25th.
July, not June.
Oh, June.
And Desi brought this in out of the purchase card thing and it says you can make reservations and pay for lodging on behalf of others.
Oh, you can?
Mhm.
Oh, well, that's good to know.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that is good. Well, then we can handle that. We don't need to talk to Stephen on that. Put that in there, okay.
Okay.
Awesome.
Okay, this is, that's a blanket.
I'm actually going through the AT&amp;T stuff right now. I just don't have it completely done. But I, I am going by each account number and putting what payments we've made so that will help me to figure all this stuff out. I got, I'm about halfway through, about halfway done with it.
Um, uh, hey, Max. But you wanna shoot some guns?
Yeah, thank you.
This folder here is huge. Oh, I know it. Might have to talk with the District One people.
I think at one point we kept saying, Donna, quit calling.
That's it.
You're over your limit.
Yes, no more. This is ridiculous. What's that? Oh, tire repairs. I had a brand-new tire on the front of a tractor that lasted one week. And then cut the sidewall out of it again. Same tire. It was, it's the same tire, we put a new tire on.
Same axle.
Yeah, same tractor, same driver, same.
No more repeats on that again, huh?
No kidding, and this is after I had a talk with the driver.
Oh, I would hate to be the one to come tell you it happened a second time.
He wouldn't.
He wouldn't do it.
No, he wouldn't.
You know, back on that phone deal, what does the emergency manager pay?
Yeah, they should, there should be some out of that, yeah, yeah.
Cindy, I just about got this signed.
Okay, that's fine.
I, I ain't a kid yet. I think if we, that's a record setter right there.
Is OSU on that deal?
I thought so.
I don't even know who's on that plan.
Well, but we don't reverse anything from, we don't get anything back from them.
No, will it be in their budget, I mean, if they, if we pay their phone bill, I mean, it would be in their budget. It'd be the same thing, the, the health department is different over there.
Right, yeah, they're different.
DHS would be different.
Yeah, yeah, but OSU extension should.
I, I would, I don't.
I'll check on, yeah. And it's D two, but not the other district, right? Okay, and then. And the sheriff or, okay.
Election board.
Mm-hmm.
See, she said something about eleven, that makes eleven, OSU emergency manager, sheriff, DA.
I thought there was ten, and here's how I get ten.
Okay, because you don't have the emergency manager. I forgot that emergency manager should be on there.
Oh, there's emergency manager.
Oh, excuse me, I missed that one.
Okay, no, I made it too fast, I started that one, I'm sorry. I'm gonna have to write smaller.
Okay.
Who am I missing?
You got D two on there. So, you got the corporate, I don't know. Election, well, there's election. Oh, the DA. Is the DA not on our bill, as you're separate?
I don't think they're on ours.
Okay, maybe not, maybe not, maybe that's why there's the ten, that could be, I don't know.
I'll find out first. I mean, I need to know that. I need to know that, so I'll find that out. Like I said, I start and I got, I'm working through the billing and all that, and I'm about halfway done. I'll try to get that finished up today or tomorrow, and we'll get that.
That's Jeffrey Lindell, James's brother.
Mm-hmm.
His dad, Darryl, went toward for us down there, about to oversee here.
Okay.
That just on.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, there's more to that than what you know.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
You didn't get randomly picked, did you?
Yeah, I did.
You did?
Mm-hmm.
It wa- at least it wasn't your supervisor sending you down there.
It was.
Oh, it was? Sidney picking on you? Oh.
Thank you. Merry Christmas. It gets worse before it gets better.
Yeah, this seems like the first of the month.
Yeah, I know it. Teach us that's special and think we're gonna knock all that stuff out.
Mm-hmm.
We're not meeting next week, right?
No.
That means when we come back, we're probably gonna be greeted with another big stack.
Cindy, did we sign that, that, we did sign that one, right? The trip with the.
P hard.
P hard one, we did sign that, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure because I know that one's timely.
Yeah.
Oh, hell, did you already sign it?
Oh, am I good, huh? Now I do that.
I don't know. And this one too.
Who are they too, and I can probably tell you why.
Sheriff's.
For what? Well, we brought it last week and then for some reason, oh, I know why. We had to do corrective billing on those because they had.
That's right, and I signed it.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Yeah, that's right. I think the health department's folder is about, done all it can do.
So, and I'll attach this with it as well, and we'll put it in.
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Here are the two different.
She'll never talk to me when I want, the Siri thing, she'll never talk to me when I want her to talk to me.
Mine neither.
But I did download the Hey Siri thing. Do you have the Hey Siri?
No, mine's Dixie or something, and I don't even know how to use it.
Siri is Apple.
Oh, and yours is?
Oh, yeah. I got you.
Because finally, when I did the Hey Siri thing, she finally understands my hick accent. Oh, look, see, I said Hey Siri. She heard my voice. But I set up Jones for her, but then, and it let me set it up, but then, and then, but now, well, and I did it like halfway through, and then she did it halfway through, and it stuck with hers. That's weird. I surprised it took it.
Just had an ant crawling on me. Who but though? I don't know, I didn't see him. Just hope the cousins don't come.
I've been getting eaten up by the mosquitoes here the last week or so.
Yeah, I can't, I can't sign without them, just.
Oh, it's, yeah. Believe it or not, I must be sweet enough, they wanna bite me because they bite the heck out of me.
Next, we'll just sign the top of that one.
That for the emergency manager.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Pretty soon that oughta come off your bill because he's going with that AT&T one net or whatever.
Yeah.
First net.
First net, excuse me.
Yeah.
They're supposed to have a presentation at their conference.
Right, on that.
On that, yep.
And that's... Is that now? Does that start tomorrow?
I think it's...
Or the... Or next week, I can't remember.
I don't remember either. It may be this week, because I...
Yeah, I can't remember.
You know, the 8-1-1 deal, the Oakville thing, down at Enid is Wednesday.
Yeah, that's what I said, well, it's the same day as our album. I got Martin Cruz.
And Desi and I are going to that REIT grant.
Yeah.
Thing on Thursday. We switched ours to go during the day.
Yeah, so, yeah, one...
Yeah.
Well, the guy has been just running his call.
Okay, yeah, yeah, there you go. That'll work. Okay, well, I'm gonna hold him, 'cause I texted him.
'Cause he doesn't afford to.
Oh, okay, well, I emailed him, told him we were gonna... That he was gonna have to put up with this, so he sent on top. Okay, I'll holler at him, yeah. Might as well.
Save some money.
Yeah, make him take us out to dinner, though.
Yeah.
Well, we'll all pay that street. Yes, I will call him.
Max, we're not gonna pay your payment on your lowboy, or anything from here on.
We're not? Why? Is it District Two?
I'm out of ink.
Oh.
Oh, but Pat's to the rescue.
I was gonna say, here's another one.
Thank you, Pat.
Hey, we're ready to help.
Yeah, yeah. I'll fill it up.
Think I actually have one in my purse.
Well, I was gonna say, you can take that one, I'll just put a refill in this one. Here, be sure and get the one that has the most ink in it, though.
Come on.
Yeah, them's the ones that we had to mix up on the names, wasn't it?
Oh, yeah, Chad Cagle and Spleth. And it's a good thing we held them both out, 'cause he'd scratched out the wrong one on the wrong end. Had them backwards.
Do we have the paperwork for Item B?
Mm-hmm. Is that your leases?
Yeah.
Yes, and they have been reviewed by the DA. You wanna look at it?
No.
I mean, but I mean, yeah, I was gonna make sure, I might just make sure. I've got two copies, too, so...
Well, yeah, bedbugs, yeah.
We... Okay, here's what the deal... 'Cause we asked about that, it's like, why did they buy bedbug spray? Or whatever it was. So, I called down and asked Sherry, "Why are y'all buying bedbug spray?" And she said there was someone that was... It's highly alert, there are the ticks and fleas or whatever out in the... And that was the closest thing they could come to, they're in Palm Creek, so they bought bedbug spray. As I said, I said to her, "Is there something we need to know?"
Looks good to me. We were gone over the weekend, and just picking the bedbugs, squash bugs.
Oh, or...
I mean, just killed it dead. Every squash plant we had.
My brother come to the family reunion yesterday carrying two five-gallon buckets of cucumbers.
Oh, yeah, we got... I should've brought cucumbers.
You should've brought cucumbers.
And we...
That's the only thing we didn't seem to grow.
Watermelons. Watermelons were doing good. His tomato plants are dying, everybody's tomato plants are dying.
My tomato plants, they grew, and it looked like they spent so much money making... Or smudge.
Of energy.
Nutrients on that, that it didn't produce. You didn't beat them enough.
They might.
You go out and beat them with the flour, with this.
Flash water.
Yeah, you beat them around at all.
Yeah, get out that problem on them.
Tomatoes.
Really?
Whip them into shape.
Yeah, that helps them. It makes them pollinate them, yeah.
Yeah, take a bruising.
The two tomatoes that we did pick got all cracked, you know?
Yeah.
Heat and drive.
Now, I've got some pumpkins growing in my yard, and I didn't even plant them. They're just voluntary.
Leftover or a deck of them.
Well, or my kids, it's out where they had garden, you know? But, you know, it's been at least two years, and... But I've got, picked one, and then I've got about six or seven out there. So, I told the girls, they've already got the fall stuff out and decorations. "Oh, I'll bring my pumpkins up."
Somebody said that Buddy Yulberg picked fifty, sixty-pound watermelon.
Oh, my goodness.
Wow, did that get to the spring?
Yeah. Yeah, no kidding.
Well, is the farmer's market up here doing okay?
I mean, I've been going up there.
Oh, yeah, I just wondered.
Yeah, I've been going up there on the weekends. I didn't go this weekend, but, um, yeah, they... I mean, she's got, she's had homemade breads and cinnamon rolls, and then they've had squash, cucumbers, tomatoes.
Have they had really homegrown tomatoes, or those ones that they pick up and bring in?
I don't know now. The first ones I got from them were really, really good, but these last ones I got last week.
Yeah.
I don't know. But the first ones I got, they were smaller, but they had really good flavor. Cody brought me a rush spry, or is it rush?
Mm-hmm.
Watermelon?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness, it was like eating cotton candy.
Yeah. You can get those, uh, side of the road down there.
And then there was a gal over that had a little stand over kinda by Bill Lock, or, you know, Lock.
I've seen that one.
And I got a walk, it was kind of expensive, but I bought a watermelon from her, and it was... And we had it up here, and it was a pretty good watermelon.
Who is that, like, you know?
I don't... No, I don't know who she is.
Not from here in town, is it?
No. And she had cantaloupe and stuff, and it was okay. I've had better, but I've definitely had worse. But she even had it, like, cut up where she could... She said, "I do that for the truckers that come through, 'cause then they can just eat it out of the bag." I saw your new truck down there. Lisa and I went down in eight Friday night down at Steve's, and we were just kinda driving around. And I didn't know I was on that, you know? We were driving around by the fairgrounds. I said, "Oh, there's that new oil truck, that's nice and shiny, for now."
It just, he never called, nothing, it just showed up.
Really?
About Wednesday, I guess, the last week.
Yeah, I've gotta turn.
Gotta get it level, yeah. That's a pretty good stack, isn't it?
That's a first-of-the-month stack.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank goodness, we didn't have to sign blankets in my luggage today.
Well, we closed out some blankets, oh. That's your last folder, isn't it?
Yes, it is. Hi, we're almost done with PS. Give us just a couple seconds. Okay, thank you.
I move to approve payment of purchase orders and travel plans.
Second.
Wrong, move seconds to approve payment of purchase orders and travel plans. Let's present it, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes motion to adjourn unanimously.
You didn't sign any of your blankets, did you?
Oh, well, I'm only supposed to do one thing.
It's a good thing we didn't ask him to carry the coffee this morning, ain't it, Max?
You wouldn't have got cream and sugar, would you?
Maybe not.
I finished it.
No, I didn't.
Oh, darn. Probably all cold now.
Sorry.
That's why you got you those little heaters. Um, do we have a motion to approve blankets?
I shall move.
Second. Here's the last one.
Seconds to approve blankets, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
All eyes motion to adjourn unanimously.
See, Pat, did you make that motion to die?
You did.
You did on the blankets.
And you made it to approve.
Yes.
Okay, so it's my notice, it's my turn to make up. Notice to bidder twenty-one, twenty-eight, twin bridge construction, CN one ninety-two for District Two.
My second.
Okay?
Hess moved Ronk seconds to approve the notice to bidder to twenty-one, twenty-eighteen, bridge construction, circle number one ninety-two for District Two. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes motion to adjourn unanimously.
I move to approve, uh, number twenty-two dash two thousand eighteen for bridge construction for a bridge with no number.
Second.
Ronk moved Hess second to approve bid twenty-two, twenty-eighteen for bridge located between Harmon Road and CR eleven hundred and fifty-sixth Street with no number. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes motion to adjourn unanimously. See, these bridges are like four miles apart, hoping to get a pretty decent bid.
I bet you do.
Okay.
That's kinda how you bid yours. Correcting transfers of statutory travel for county elected officials. Transfer offense per the old town state auditors and drive to the treasurer. Okay, what is this?
We have statutory travel now, uh, chart of accounts thirteen twenty.
Okay, it's a new number.
It's a new number, and we didn't have, uh, that new number last year. And it needed to be built before.
So, now, um, so did you... So, yeah, so you built them for every officer?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, we did.
So, what's gonna happen to these that have already been paid for... Yeah, how does that work?
There will be, uh, probably be an audit finding on it.
We won't do a transfer?
Well, that's what we're doing today.
Okay, okay, excuse me, I'm sorry.
That's a transfer in and of itself.
You're transferring it, you're not built, you've already built the number, right?
The number's been built.
Gotcha.
But there needed to be money put into that account before the checks were written, and that didn't happen.
On this last pay, yeah.
So, but it is now.
So, when we rolled over fifty percent of our money, how are we gonna do that? Because it was rolled on over under the old number, so...
It was rolled under the old number, but before a check was written out of the old number, what should've happened is...
All of that should've been...
At least part of it. Before you write any check out of the new statutory number, money should've been transferred with the transfer. And it...
We should've either paid it like we were before until we had the new account set up, or gotten the new... We sure really should've had the account set up before we paid it out of that.
So, you're transferring...
But my accounts were set up. Jennifer set up the accounts because, like, two months before that happened, you know, I visited with you.
Yeah.
That was a new account that Sherry wanted put in there.
So, you're doing twenty-four hundred dollars from your travel? So, does every... Okay, and here is...
Well, and here's where we get into a problem, because we have the hotel money, the thousand-dollar hotel money, that really belongs in thirteen ten. And we have the statutory travel that we have to do, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, exactly.
So, we kinda got a mixture of money right there, right now, but until the budget gets done, and we have the actual amount of the statutory travel to make amends in that same account, we'll get it right in the statutory travel at that point. But there'll be no more than the statutory travel amount in that account once the budgets are settled.
Okay, did you mean thirteen twenty or thirteen ten?
Thirteen twenty is statutory travel, thirteen ten is regular travel, and there shouldn't be anything else in the thirteen ten except for...
The thousand dollar?
Yes, yes. And Scott, uh, Scott Sterling did not get that thirteen, or that, uh, travel money last year, that thousand-dollar hotel.
Oh, no, no, uh-uh, no.
Is he not supposed to?
Uh-uh.
Oh, okay.
No.
Well, I mentioned that, so you may have to...
That comes out of his cash accounts, like ours.
Okay.
Like, we don't get the thousand dollars either, so it comes out of our cash accounts.
Okay, sorry about that.
Yeah. So...
So, you're gonna have...
So, we don't have Dean, wait a minute.
Yeah, you will. You do.
Okay.
My bad. Yeah, I just found her this morning to give her signature, I'm so sorry.
Oh, okay, sorry, I said, "We don't have Hall," okay, great, thank you.
And then this is hotel money for Scott, so if.
No, we don't need that. Just, uh-uh, avoid that or tell him that, no, he doesn't have that.
Okay, so I'll just leave that alone. And here is Scott and he, I had to find him first, oh, right back, yeah, and get their signature.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve and Cindy, in, in, I don't, I'll get Cindy to go through and say all this because it needs to be in the minutes, what, exactly what we're doing. So there's twenty-four hundred dollars for statutory for the treasurer's office.
And I can do that. I'll put the amounts like I do on regular transfers and I'll put where.
And you're saying you're leaving twenty-four in your travel, your other travel?
There's not twenty-four in there. That's just half our budget.
Okay, half your budget. So you're taking it out of the travel from hotels and putting it in the travel, got twenty-four hundred?
Yeah.
Gotcha. So twenty-four hundred dollars for the treasurer. Is this everything? We have three thousand for the um assessor.
You want to just sign that?
Oh. Okay.
Important to just.
That goes with, that's the backup paperwork for.
For all of it?
No, for that one. Each one of them will have backup. Then we have ten thousand eight hundred for the commissioners.
Anyway, I shall move.
Okay.
We're going to get ahead of ourselves.
Okay. And do you second that, Max?
Yes, I do.
So, so, all in favor. The, the, um, the motion is, I was going to go through there, the motion is to, to, to put money out of regular travel and put it into statutory travel. It was twenty-four hundred dollars for the treasurer, three thousand for the assessor, ten thousand eight hundred for the commissioners, twenty-four hundred for the county clerk, twenty-four hundred for the court clerk, and thirty-six hundred for the, for uh sheriff. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes motion carrying unanimously. And the next one.
Agenda item.
Okay, let's see.
Do you do that one at eight twenty-six?
Correcting transfer for the sheriff's budget to the M and O to travel. Was that the same as the one I'm fed on you?
I think so, because I don't have anything on that.
You know what? What was it?
I don't know. I don't have anything on that.
Correcting transfer for sheriff budget to M and O to travel error and fifty percent movement from FY seventeen eighteen to FY eighteen nineteen.
No.
That was your, that was your uh.
A straight.
Two oh oh five, huh? No, it wasn't.
I'm, I just, okay.
That was your two oh oh five. You should have that. If you don't have that, I'll go get a copy for you.
Yeah, I don't have it.
That was a problem.
Yeah.
In your office.
Well, that's, I was asked. Okay, because I don't know what.
Don't have it. Correction of dispersment of funds from Kim Aqua seventy-seven debt credit twenty-three.
Something needs to go through committee.
Oh, I'm sorry, it is? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Let's see, I have, maybe I have it here, so.
It almost sounds redundant.
But I don't think it is. It's.
Well, this is M and O, this is not travel to tra, this is travel to travel. This is M and O to travel.
Yeah, and I.
And this is it here?
No, that's the next item. That's the. Penny went to go get that one.
I thought we had that right because I got two eighty-eight.
Well, what Des, Desi brought it to me. She's the one who um she's saying that you got three sixty-five, but then.
I got two eighty-eight on my, uh, if you look on the um, if you look on the.
Oh, thank you.
Appropriations.
Oh, you did just hand that to me.
Yeah, because Scott.
Oh, well, then it's here.
Yeah, pretty sure.
Okay.
It might be in the back of that one.
Yeah, but it is.
You might have signed it without throwing it.
Yeah, thirty-six hundred dollars was ten, thirty-six hundred.
You did?
Yeah, but that's, then we didn't have another one for the sheriff.
There you go, that's it.
Okay, we don't have the three thousand dollar one, or the other one for, is there, there's not another one in there for the sheriff?
Yeah, I think, isn't there?
There it is.
There is?
That's where I was.
We signed it and that one was blank on the top. You know, didn't have this.
I don't remember him signing.
No, there's not one here for the sheriff.
For the sheriff.
I just remembered a little.
That's why we're not in the motion, I said, you know, for some reason we did three thousand for her. Well, hers was five hundred, so it should be thirty-six, thirty-six hundred. They hit, this should.
That's the travel one for the sheriff and we don't, we're not going to sign it.
That's what she's saying though. They don't have one.
Well, this one here is the three, thirty-six hundred.
This will be half of it.
And putting it in his travel, so it would work. If we accident, if we wrongly put it in M and O, we wouldn't need the second one like we did on everybody else if it didn't go to his travel.
Oh, yeah.
And that's half the year right there.
Right.
Six months of six hundred dollars.
That's the statutory travel. This is a whole different deal though. Um.
Well, that's one from M, we must have moved it into M and O and not travel.
But that's the one that you said you couldn't find, right? That's the one you said you couldn't find.
Yeah, but this is one that we moved to M and O and it should have gone.
No, I didn't just give it to her. I went off to the copy that I have.
Yeah, but that's.
It was in the pile.
You handed her because you went to get Scott to sign it.
Right, okay.
This should be thirteen twenty, thirteen ten. Just now you handed it across. No, wait a minute, wait, 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 wait. No, yeah, yeah, thirteen twenty, right, yeah, it should be thirteen twenty, correct? Yes.
Pat, are you?
Yes. Now Cindy, you made that, so you better look at that again.
I, I know, and it's.
You actually made that.
Thirty-six hundred dollars.
Was it in the M and O?
Was in M and O.
Was it in the M and O?
Yeah, I've got the paperwork right here.
Okay.
I don't think that's correct, Cindy.
Okay, maybe not. Um.
That was a mistake from something else. That was, that was in an appropriation.
This is, this is last year's, this is last year's, so that, this would be, what, what, what we, when we did a rollover of our fifty percent money, did we accidentally roll over fifty percent into his M and O and not into his travel? Is that what we did?
Yes, that's what happened.
Okay, okay, so this, yes, okay, so.
So this was for the first fifty percent.
So what we need to do is take it, no, that would still be right. We're still going to take it out of the M and O, because he doesn't have any M and O.
You're, you're looking at last year's money. We need to get last year's money movement correct, though.
Last year's money was.
Look at it. Fifty, we had fifty percent. It, you've got to have it in last year's money before you move it. And so therefore it was fiscal year seventeen eighteen to eighteen nineteen. You've got to get last year's money correct first.
You mean you went a whole year with the money in M and O, not travel?
I don't know when the appropriation was.
It was in travel and not in M and O. Is that right? Let's see.
It's all right. This is, this is seventeen eighteen. This says travel. Where's your account number? Yeah, where's your account number? Okay, thirteen ten. So when we moved it and we signed it and the excise board signed it.
It just depends on when it went in, Cindy, because it could have been a July or a June appropriation, which is probably what I think happened. It happened in June.
See, it went into M and O and it should have gone into travel.
There you go, yeah.
On seven one of eighteen.
Seven one. It went into, when we rolled over fifty percent of the budget, it went to M and O, got you, right here. So it should be now thirteen twenty because now we have the new number. So this would be correct.
Yeah.
We're not going to balance unless you put it into thirteen ten and then remake the move.
A new one, okay. We got to do thirteen ten first and then do another one that from thirteen ten to thirteen twenty.
Okay, so this one's going to be the thirteen ten.
Yeah. And then we need another one of these. Not this one.
For the, for the, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so then we need one, and we'll have to get Sheriff Sterling to sign that. And we've already signed it, but we need a motion on that one.
On H.
Yeah, we got to have it on H.
I make a motion that we transfer from the sheriff's budget to M and O to travel an error.
Thirteen ten.
Thirteen ten, right. That was made on the fifty percent movement for the seventeen eighteen to the eighteen nineteen year.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, so Hess moves, Wrong seconds, to sign the correcting transfer from the sheriff's uh M and O to travel thirteen ten that was done in error on the fifty percent movement from seventeen eighteen to eighteen nineteen. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes motion carrying.
Here's the thirty-one hundred dollars for the sheriff.
Thirty-one hundred?
Thirty-one hundred dollars for the sheriff going from thirteen ten to thirteen.
Oh, because you're, because, no, thirty-six hundred, because she thought she, she could, she'd keep a thousand dollars. We need to change it to thirty-six hundred.
Okay, if you give me a pen, I'll do that.
Because he doesn't have travel, so it should be the full thirty-six hundred, and that would be correct.
And then will we take the sheriff, right?
Okay, and that was the one that was included in the motion G.
Okay, so we're still correct on that, so.
These are copies for you all on that.
Okay. Well, just a minute, we got to address this one.
Oh, sorry.
I would, before we do that one today, I, I would respect, in, in the interest of time, send that back to Desi because I think that when I got my appropriation, okay, well, they're their question, but.
Well, okay.
I thought there was the two eighty-eight. Well, maybe it wasn't.
Well, I mean, I can have Desi pull the.
See, right here, it says two eighty-eight.
Well, but I think, did she change that?
The Excel spreadsheet that you gave me had the two eighty-eight.
Yeah.
But you had three sixty-five on your Excel spreadsheet.
That's not my Excel spreadsheet. Must be Desi. She's the one who figures all that stuff.
That's your Excel spreadsheet.
That's seventy-seven is the hell over from mine.
Well, but I got it from Desi.
Well, you each had, this is, this is how the Missis were done. And it says, don't use spreadsheet.
Right, that was after.
After the fact, after the fact that I used the spreadsheet and the spreadsheet wasn't right and I was told, don't use the spreadsheet.
Okay, but when I got my money, I'm pretty sure when I got, I gave it to Paul to, because we keep ours too.
Yeah.
Make sure we're balanced. And I told him to put two eighty-eight in, so that's what I put in, so I think.
And that two eighty-eight was a correct figure, right?
Right.
But if you look at the spreadsheet, that's not what was on it.
Right, two eighty-eight is what was supposed to be. My, there's my two eighty-eight. You guys had one forty-four and you split it. That was out of the.
Forty.
So you each had seventy-seven, so let's just.
I say, because Desi's the one who brought this to me.
Well, what we need to do is look at the appropriations, see what you actually put on your books. I mean, she might have it in her deal one way, but let's get with, see what Alex has in her paperwork. So let's just hold that, no action. Put it back on for.
And then since Jennifer keeps an appropriation ledger, we need to know too.
Yeah.
Which we need to.
Yes.
How do you have?
All I know.
Okay, well, let's get all on the same page on that one. Okay. Uh, acknowledge a final annual report of home state extensions for Grant County. That's this, okay. Acknowledge that and acknowledge the final abstract evaluation assessments. And acknowledge the final assessors report to the excise board. Yeah, we're a little bit of a million less than what was certified in June. So we can, uh, I talked to Buddy and he's put, you've balanced out and he says he's got like one thing left to do with the.
Yeah, I talked with him and he told me he'd get ahold of me when he's going to come out.
He, um, we would like everybody, and Cindy, we'll have to have all of them. I mean, you do a whole bunch of those.
Work on those this week as far as the.
Priority more so than some of this other stuff, because we got to make sure we have all of them. I, I think.
Health department, the DA, the.
Yeah, OSU, the libraries, and remember our indigenous family charities.
No, we don't have to do the cities now.
No, the cities. But you know, there's, you've got, you've got a ton of all of those. So if you just go through last year's budget, make sure.
This afternoon.
Act some off. All right, great, thank you. Um, treasurer's allocation of alcohol beverage tax for July twenty eighteen in amount of eight thousand two hundred and forty-nine twenty-one, that's up.
Move to approve. Second.
Wrong moves has seconds to approve the treasurer's allocation of alcohol beverage tax in amount of eight thousand two hundred and forty-nine twenty-one. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes motion carrying unanimously. Treasurer's mortgage certification fee appropriation for July forty-five dollars, I'm going to approve.
I shall move.
Second.
Hess moved, Wrong seconded to approve the treasurer's mortgage certification fee appropriation for July twenty eighteen in amount of forty-five dollars. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes motion carrying unanimously. We'll need to send Scott's back to me. He doesn't have his um.
Oh, oh, she gave that to me.
Oh, he does, okay.
Kenny just.
One.
Oh, the.
No, that's had to go into a regular fund, the chart of accounts. No, I think last week you guys had.
So it's a general, so it's a.
It's, it's not in general, it's not a general fund.
But we should still get.
His own cash account.
But we should, right, because he, he, you gave him a paper here.
Well, I just wanted you to know that it was zeroed down.
Okay, but, but he should show, he needed to deal to, to, to zero, he need, he doesn't, he, he's got his jail fund service and cash bond, but he doesn't have his.
It's stray.
To show it to zeroed out, he needs to add that on this one, just to make it.
Didn't know it needed to.
Yeah, just, yeah, just to make sure that he's, just so we add that, that, to show, because he'd been carrying eight hundred and twenty-six in it or something. So he needed, he needs to show on his report that it's zeroed out.
Yeah, it's my fault, because I didn't think he needed one. Did he sign one of those last week? Do anything about that last week?
We just set up the.
I move to approve the monthly officer's report subject to audit for everyone except the sheriff.
Second.
Wrong moves, has seconds to accept, or to approve the monthly officer's reports for July twenty-eighth, subject to audit, subject to audit for the assessor, county clerk, court clerk, election board, health department, and treasurer. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously.
I impede just acknowledge.
I suppose we ought to have motions on those, just, we probably could have motions to acknowledge them on J K and L as well. Do you think? Or do we just acknowledge them?
Yeah, that'd be fine. I make a motion to acknowledge. On J K and L.
It would be I J and K.
I J, yeah.
Is that right?
Oh, I've got it wrong on my deal.
Yeah, J K and L, the assessor's reports.
Oh, when I did my thing, it jacked up my things, yeah, okay.
Hess moved, Wrong seconds, to acknowledge those, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously, and now we can acknowledge the general report.
I'm move to acknowledge.
Second.
Wrong moves, has seconds to acknowledge the monthly general report from the sheriff's office for July twenty eighteen, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously. I'd queue designation of receiving officer, Sherry Yulberg.
I move to approve the designation of receiving officer for Sherry Yulberg for District Three.
Second.
Wrong moves, has seconds to approve the designation of receiving officer Sherry Yulberg for District Three, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously. State expenditures for the DA's office. In the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Hess moved, Wrong seconds, to approve the state expenditure reimbursement for the DA's office for July twenty eighteen in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously. I sure like those papers attached to that.
Well, okay, and on this one, I was looking through, you know, just double, and I added overs on there because we are paying, that's our matching card.
Yeah, that should be on there.
So I have updated all of these figures.
That's good, yeah. And you, yeah.
Sorry, I didn't.
You tolerated the.
Yeah, and that one wasn't. Didn't hit anything.
They give them between the linebacker and the safety.
So I think it's where it should be now.
We have a motion to approve the state payroll claim voucher for the election board.
So moved.
For, yeah, second.
Wrong moves, has seconds to approve the reimbursement for the state payroll claim voucher for the election board secretary in the amount of two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars and twelve cents, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously. I, did I sign that one in the right place? Do I sign it?
You're the Department of Supervisory Approval, so.
Not the claim.
Oh, you're the, you know what, maybe I can.
I think I'm the claimant.
Yeah, you're the, I'm sorry, you are the claim. Do you want me, I have it saved, I can print out a new one.
Why don't we do that and I'll re-sign that? Yeah, because I think, yeah, that's where.
I'll have Mindy come in and I can reprint them real quick.
Okay.
Well, most of them may don't.
Yeah.
So it's, I can do that.
Okay, yeah. ODOT resolution, County Road Machinery and Equipment revolving lease forms.
I make a motion to approve. Lease renewal, twenty eighteen with the ODOT. There's two original.
Two original.
That's not this, though.
Oh, which one is, oh, I've got it, I'm sorry, that's this, sir?
Sorry, sorry.
Sorry, I'm handing you the wrong stuff.
Yeah, I wished it would have been for that, that would have been great.
And I did verify with Desi. That those are the correct lease agreements.
Okay, got you, all right.
I just, I have two.
Okay, got you.
So, yeah, you'll sign one, I don't know if I can just scan it to.
That's true.
Yeah, well, we'll have to if you need.
Yep, that's exactly right. Yeah.
This, we're just.
Verifying it.
Renewing, this is like a contract deal.
Yes, it is, so we need a motion to sign the ODOT resolution to renew our lease agreements with them for F Y seventeen, or eighteen nineteen, excuse me.
I shall move, second.
Hess moved, Wrong seconds, to approve the ODOT resolution with the County Road Machinery and Equipment Revolving Fund for our lease renewals for F Y eighteen nineteen, and please list those in the minutes what they are.
Sure.
Thank you, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously. ODOT insurance verification for equipment to go through there, we need to confirm our insurance, so we need a motion to sign this to confirm it.
So moved, second.
So Wrong moved, has seconds to approve the ODOT insurance verification for the equipment of road machinery purchased through the County Road and Equipment Revolving Fund, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously.
I'll get that stuff to Betty right after meeting.
And our, Dusty should have probably sent him.
I've got the, I've got the verification stuff, yeah, so I'll send that as well.
Okay, the lease purchase agreement for the two thousand nineteen Kenworth T four seventy oil distributor truck of Van Keppel for D one and D two.
D one, D three.
Excuse me.
You don't want to.
D one and D three. D one and D three, excuse me.
Now, Cindy, if you want to get in on that, you can, fine.
Does that look, they're good?
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, it's what we agreed on, and the bill.
And Stevens.
I make a motion, we approve. Yeah, Stevens signed off on it.
Okay, yeah.
I make a motion that we approve the lease purchase agreement for the two thousand nineteen Kenworth Oil Distributor Truck from Van Keppel.
I'll second.
Hess moved, Wrong seconded, to approve the lease purchase agreement for the two thousand nineteen Kenworth T four seventy oil distributor truck purchased through Van Keppel for D one and D three. Oh, the lease is through them as well, okay, got it, through them, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously, for some reason I thought they had that with someone else.
Well, I thought they did too.
This is through, lease with them, they'd be paying Van Keppel.
Isn't it through the bank in Vena?
Oklahoma State Bank.
I mean, I didn't type, those forms are already typed up.
Do you, here, start looking through there and see if you see where it says. Van Keppel signed it, look at the first signature page, Van Keppel signed it. Those families are going to Van Keppel, they're not going to.
We approved the one with Oklahoma State Bank, so we can't.
This schedule is executed by the leaseor.
It was, it was Oklahoma State Bank, wasn't it?
I think so, we need to go back and look and make sure.
Now, here at the very back. Okay, we're signing it with Van Keppel, and Van Keppel is then assigning it to Oklahoma State Bank. Well, Stevens, but Stevens signed off on it, so I think it's good to go.
All right.
Okay, just making sure, just making sure.
Is that a alarm?
Sound like the elevator, elevator alarm. Which they did come in inspected last week, I think, or last. Since it expired in March.
They're supposed to do it quarterly, I thought we had one of those agreement deals that we sign every year.
With the elevate, the vessel, or whatever, big old long name.
It said in the minutes too, from that meeting on the head, that District One was doing three thousand dollars a month lease purchase, and District Three was doing two hundred and ten dollars.
Yeah, that's for the first month, and then every other month it flip-flops. If you want to read the fine print. And then whenever District Two isn't looking, we'll flip the payment in for them. Okay, here, Cindy.
Yeah, when do you go back to your next NACO deal?
I want to schedule that for.
We're gonna make a balloon payment then.
Oh, man.
I knew when you dated that to me, I saw Oklahoma State Bank somewhere.
Yeah, and they actually even called like a couple, you know.
Oh, they did?
I think they called.
Your office?
Yeah. I'm trying to remember. But I'm sure that's how they do it, and then Van Keppel, then if you, then if you bolt on it, then Van Keppel a little bit was, I mean, falls back on them.
That's what it looks like to me, like.
Your lease, yeah, and they're selling off the paper.
Oh, this is the deal.
Cindy, really, you ought to got in on this because we'll probably be using that truck on some of your, unless you hire, you know, third party to do it.
I've never used that chipper, but I sure seem to pay repair bills on it.
Well, you know, that's.
Well, your third keeps breaking.
I wish you'd do a little better maintenance on my third.
Get into a maintenance issue, right, I see.
No, you missed a spot here, Cindy, yeah.
All we left is finishing up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
The next item is.
Oh, is this that?
This is a settlement agreement with the Medford Fire Department and Mitre Fire Support LLC. This is the one that crossed over on the fiscal years, just like the deal with the lease on the fairgrounds. You had to go get signatures, can't remember who was one, but this is the same thing.
Okay, yeah, I forgot about that.
Yeah, I did too.
Yeah.
Okay, so you.
So, yeah, we need to sign that.
Okay, so it's my turn, I move to approve and sign the settlement agreement between the Medford Fire Department and Mitre Fire Support LLC in the amount of ten thousand eight hundred eighty-one dollars and eleven cents.
Second, that motion.
Wrong moves, Hess seconds, to sign the settlement agreement per the advice of ADA Steven Young between Medford Fire Department, City of Medford, and Mitre Fire Support LLC in the amount of ten thousand eight hundred eighty-one dollars and eleven cents due to the overlap of fiscal years. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess.
All eyes motion carried unanimously.
I didn't know if y'all just wanted to acknowledge that we were gonna cancel. And is that okay how I worded it as far as? I don't know, I mean, I just thought I'll put something out on the website, you know, I'll put it on the website and post it, you know, that. Or if you want to, I can change it.
Yeah. Cancel, we need to cancel the regular board meeting scheduled for August twentieth due to the invitation of all county commissioners in the state of Oklahoma to the White House.
I make a motion we cancel the August twenty-fifth, twentieth meeting.
I'll second that.
Hess moves, Wrong seconds, to cancel the regular Board of County Commissioners meeting scheduled for August twentieth, twenty eighteen due to an invitation from the White House for all county commissioners to be present. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously. F Y twenty nineteen contact renewal for F Y seventeen contract, state of Oklahoma Officer of Juvenile's Affair.
Stevens got it, he did.
Okay, no action, but. Okay, so it must have been a three-year contract.
It was, and I pulled all that out, I've got it attached to all the documentation.
No action, okay, we're waiting to hear back from our ADA Steven Young on that. The NACO Professional Development Academy selection of participants from Grant County, we have two.
That was Dina's, but I scanned it too, yeah, yeah, yeah. I just closed it back up and stuck it in after I scanned it in.
All right.
There's a less.
I've been talking back to NACO on this, and they have about sixteen per class that they do. They've already got a hundred and twenty people signed up. They're going to do one starting September sixteenth, seventeenth, and one like January twentieth. So we have two letters here that is interested, we have the first letter here is from Dina Killian. Dear Grant County Commissioners, I appreciate the idea of inviting our employees to be part of the NACO Leadership Academy. It sounds like a very interesting program, and I like the idea of getting them involved. Therefore, I'd like to nominate Adrian Henry for my office to be a part of this program. She certainly has the leadership capability that I need in my office, I'd appreciate consideration, given the verse, signed Dina Killian. Our second one is from the Office of Cindy Brat, Grant County Clerk. It said, I would like to submit Alex Andrea Britton of the Grant County Clerk's Office and Academy for the online professional development program, NACO High Performance Leadership Academy. Your consideration for this submission is greatly appreciated. Now, we have one scholarship that is, that NACO gives us to count a thousand dollars, so it'll be four ninety-five, and each one after that is the full fourteen ninety-five. I think this is an outstanding program, I'm, like I said, there's one county in California sending ten from their county.
Wow.
So it is becoming, and the first round of invites that went out, went out to a select group of counties, and we were included in that, I think they sent them out to one hundred counties for consideration. That's why I said there's already a hundred and twenty that's applied, it was due last week, I asked for consideration, so. I think it came out of our county general, I think it's all about building leadership. This is for mid-level people in our courthouse that is in leadership positions would take this and expand leadership among our county people. I think it's an outstanding, I'd like to consider both of them.
I, yeah, I'm moved that we.
All right.
Consider both, or I, or that we.
Select both.
Select both, yes.
All right.
Second.
Wrong moves, has seconds to submit the names of both Alexander Britton and Adrian Henry to the NACO Professional Leadership Academy, and those to be paid out of county general.
Okay.
All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
I thought you said no.
I did too.
And I was looking at you like, what do you mean you said? And I was looking at you like, what do you mean you said no? I guess you can say what you want, but what do you mean you said no?
So, um, we'll need to get that in and I don't know if they'll both get in the first class or if they might want to split them up or anywhere. So, I suppose to be fair, draw straws or if one of them prefers, if they.
A better, more than the other, yeah.
The other one, Brian Namie is who you need to call and I would call him directly.
Okay.
Brian Namie, B-R-I-A-N-N-A-M-E-Y. His phone number should be included in that email.
Okay, okay.
But call him directly to see, tell him we have two and how they prefer we handle that. So, I don't know what the slop is. Before you figure out what we need to do, we need to figure out what's going on.
Gotcha, okay, I'll do that today.
Thank you very much. Change Order 06, Lamont Fire Department, new building, add keypad lock set to exterior door 07A West Entry and 02A South Entry.
And I do, and here it is, it's signed off by the construction manager, the architect, and I have an email from the Lamont Fire Department Chief, Colby.
Okay, where are we though on all those other change orders? See, that's the problem is, is are these numbers now correct down here? Because they were at, they took off some stuff and they were gonna add a hot water tank, but we've never seen the hot water tank added.
Well, I mean.
Maybe that's coming next.
Well, that was before this one.
I know, but.
But here's the problem, we signed, we signed like one, three, four and five and we didn't sign two, but when we signed three and four, because these are running totals, actually three and four is wrong because the running totals were incorrect because they changed, they pulled two.
I mean, so in my opinion, should they be providing the running totals on a separate sheet rather than on the actual change order? Like, but I guess the other change order.
Depends on what it's done.
Yeah, right. I mean, I have no problem with this at all. I have no problem whatsoever.
Well, how about if I will get a copy, get with this Katrina from Henry and Hodgson and tell her that she needs to be making sure that they're fixing that guaranteed maximum price?
Yeah, we need to have a total, running total.
You need a running total, okay.
Yeah, we need to, before we sign this one, we need to make sure these are correct because if you, we approved one, three, four and five. We did not approve two because that was they were gonna take the bathrooms out, remember?
Yeah.
And then we came back and they said, no, they're gonna leave the bathrooms in, but they're gonna change the hot water tank out. So, we didn't do, that was just sitting out there.
Right.
The bathrooms are still in, but maybe they're gonna go ahead and keep that, but.
Okay, so I guess on that note though, they actually kept all the ones they were gonna keep.
But they showed it as if they were deleting it, so they took it off.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
Because then they went back and, because they, they thought it was gonna be approved, so they actually.
So, they did it as a subtraction at all?
They did it as a subtraction when really it shouldn't have been. So, let's make sure those numbers are right. We need to figure out where that, because there was a hot water tank that they were, they were gonna change, delete two, add a hot water tank.
Yeah.
Change, change over a hot water tank and then make sure the running totals are right.
Gotcha.
We don't have, tell me we don't have any problem with that.
Right.
We just need to make sure the numbers are correct.
Okay.
The financial part on the bottom part.
Okay.
Okay. Road crossings?
No.
New business?
None, other than I might mention that the OSU Extension Office did close today because they have no electricity up there in the office. And I contacted Larry Hand this morning and he was not aware that they had not got the electricity back on. So, they had other project, like Katrina was going to do something on the 4-H stuff this afternoon, so basically they were closed this morning, but.
They were down here in this office last week.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, I just wanted you to be aware that they, it was unexpected this morning. They came in and then when I, Larry wasn't real happy with the contractors that they.
Left it.
Left it the way they did, so he was going to deal with that. And I, and I also want to mention, if you don't mind, just that I thought it was really nice that Randy Kyler, the old, the owner of Kyler Construction, did call me last week just to see how things were going, you know, if we had any issues. He, you know, wanted to be aware of them, you know, where the guys doing, you know, and that kind of thing. So, I thought that was very good that he did contact and touch base. And has been over several times and we have a construction meeting tomorrow.
Yes, I went to get some stuff at Staples and I had got something earlier, the day before. Somehow, some way, the card that I have for my district is missing out of my Staples. I have my tax exempt card, but the card that actually has the number, which Desi's got the number recorded in her office. I had, I've looked for that card. I tore the bag apart where I had put my stuff in to have. It's an envelope that we keep it in and evidently the flap had come open and the card disappeared. I have looked high and low for it, can't find it. Desi's called and said the only way that they'll replace that card is they're gonna replace all three of our cards. Wanted to know if there was anything that, that you got. I want to know if there's anything that you guys are gonna go buy from Staples because it's gonna take a week and a half to two weeks to get the cards replaced.
I just got some stuff yesterday, no, I'm good.
Okay, okay, well, if, if you guys don't, aren't gonna get anything, I'm gonna instruct Desi to go ahead and start that process.
Cindy, you work, Cindy, do you, do you do that or does Desi do that?
I would think we should do that, I would think, but I'll get with Desi on it too.
Get with Desi because we didn't have the number. She went back and looked in the old bills and found the number, that's my number.
Yeah, they'll probably have, they'll probably have to be the one to order it.
We, and we get two cards at our shop.
Okay.
Well, will that affect Brandon's card? I don't understand.
So, you have Staples card?
Does it affect every?
All the Staples cards?
It might affect all of them.
No, I, the way I understood it, it was just gonna affect the three road districts because they was applied for at one time.
Okay.
That's the way Desi explained it to me. But Cindy, you need to ask her about that.
Yeah, yeah.
She said that, that when she called, that it was only gonna affect us three.
Okay.
Okay, but you can clarify that with her if, okay.
Okay.
Anyway.
That'll be fine.
That was new business that I wanted to bring up because I didn't want to cancel it and you guys could buy something and it wouldn't work, whatever. I don't think they could use the card without it because their names, and that's another thing Cindy, we need to update the names at Staples because Vicky Works' name is still on there and.
Yeah, I haven't even looked, yeah, I don't see that.
Okay, I'll work, yeah, we'll get that.
Several people have it updated, so there's old names on there.
Yeah, we probably, that's good. We just updated our names on our Lowes and our Atwoods deals. We just, you know, sent a letter over there to update them just last week, I think.
Okay.
I have no new business.
I have no new business. Commissioners comments, Mr. Max, what do you have today?
We had a meeting, we're gonna have a meeting, CED meeting Wednesday and then after that, after dinner, lunch, we're gonna have an ACO district meeting. Invited the legislators to be there, gonna talk about issues and, and get their, just a kind of a, a general overall, how's things going, what can we do better thing and stuff. And that was kind of sponsored by ACO. They want to come and have a district meeting. We need to get on, onboard and get to, get and promote stuff that we want to do for this next year legislatively and be on the, kind of the same page. And that's what kind of some of that is. I know Cindy reported last week that they had a meeting down there at, at the, after our meeting at the Embassy Suites and talked about some stuff. We've got our legislative people replaced that didn't make the reelection. So, it's gonna be a little bit, some newer faces. Mark Bowles is gonna be, our other representative was Cindy on that legislative committee.
We got a new SIF.
And, and a new SIF, yes. Thank, thank you Cindy for, for being there and doing that and keeping us up with what's going on down there. That's a big job. And nationally. I haven't heard anything back, and that maybe should have been under new business, from Jody Evans. I talked to him the other day at the co-op and we talked just very, very little about the fire department. So, I know that we said at the meeting that we needed to have him clarify on the construction manager.
Right, right.
On that. And I will try to get with him this week again and get, make sure he knows. I kind of covered that a little shortly, but didn't, didn't really want to talk about that. So, anyway, it's okay. We got the new distributor truck in down at Pats. Got some people down there are learning about it today. So, as soon as the weather becomes cooperating, we're gonna start chip sealing. That's about all I have.
I've got a CDSA meeting tomorrow morning in Enid, CDSA board meeting and then I'll be at the CED number eight meeting on Wednesday and the ACO legislative meeting afterwards. Like Max said, we got the new distributor truck. It came in last Wednesday. The salesman and their asphalt specialist at the dealership are, they're training guys how to run that. And we are not going to talk bad about rain in August. However, that being said, we would, we're, we're chomping at the bit to get started while the, we're still in the heat of the, of the summertime. So, that's really about all I've got.
School got started. Let's make sure we're slowed down for our school zones and be safe out there. We're still working on our crack seal on 960. Those cracks seem to go to China, so we're, they're going over them a couple of times and coming back. On the third time, they're, it's quite, so. Roads are still closed from 6:30 in the morning until 5:00 in the evening, unless it's raining, of course, then it's open because we can't crack seal then. But we're, we're hoping, hope, hoping maybe to get that done this week. But again, it's all weather related. Last Friday, I went to King Fisher, Representative Lucas was there. So, I went down to talk to him about the FON bill and some different things that are going on with that. And it was a good meeting. He, and then this week I will be, I'm not sure I'll make the CED meeting. I've got a funeral that morning, but I will be at the ACO legislative. You think that'll be like, start like 11, Max? You think in 11?
I think that it might be, yeah, it'd be close.
Close to 11 or maybe a little early.
Look.
I'll try to get there as quick as I can.
Yeah, I, I think so because.
So, yeah, I'll try to get there, so I'll be there for that. I have a Wheat Heart Nutrition Board meeting Thursday and Paul and I know Cindy and Desi, you're all going to the REEP meeting at NOTA on Thursday as well. So, we've got that going on. Colette Teft and Barney are retiring after, I don't know, 80 years combined at the Lamont Co., Farmer's Green Co-op in Lamont. So, they've been, between the two of them, they've been there 80 years.
I ran into Barney at Apple.
Yeah, did you? Yeah. So, so anyway, that's going on. And as we know, the county commissioners from Oklahoma have been invited to the White House on Tuesday. The National Association of Counties, NACO, will be having a pre-briefing on Monday. I know Max has meetings with Langford on Wednesday morning of breakfast and then on Thursday, you've meeting with Inhofe.
Inhofe, yep.
And so, I know you've got a really busy week there, so. With that, we know we're, we've got a lot of things we're trying to do to make improvements for counties because counties matter.
They do matter.
Counties matter. All right, with that, we are down to item 10. Enter executive session for Title 25, 307B3. Discussion and guidance for acquisition of real estate by Grant County. So, do we have a motion to enter into?
I, I'm moved that we enter into executive session.
I second.
Hess moves, wrong seconds to enter into executive session at 11:06 for the, to discuss guidelines for acquisition of real estate or possible acquisition of real estate by Grant County. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All eyes motion carried.
Okay, I'm gonna call Steven and see if he.